Is it recording now?
Yep, I just turned it on.
Okay.
I got the trouble when I'm going to complain to people, I don't work for HP. I have a printer problem.
So do I need to just state the minute, actual minutes of like the normal stuff? I don't need to do more because we don't have video, right?
What do you need to do more?
Just like I don't record verbatim the entire meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. It's just.
Right.
Okay, alright, cool, cool. Alright. Five fifty-nine, I'll turn this one on, this one is on.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay, all set.
We can have one already over there and we just hold them?
Sure, you run that one.
Okay, we will call to order the Planning Commission meeting for December the second. Um, and start with the roll call.
Leanne Shaw?
Here.
Brian Baranbach?
Here.
Tom Erickson?
Here.
Michael Malloy?
Here.
Valerie Connolly?
Here.
Craig Phillips?
Here.
Suzie Bauer?
Here.
Jenny Glavens?
Here.
Thank you. Um, consent calendar approval of the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes. Does anybody have anything that they want to note with regards to those meetings? Or can I get, um, a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes? All in favor? So approved.
Um, next, citizen comments, Amy, were there any comments that came in?
No.
Okay. Um, so, close that down and then public hearing items, write into conditional use permit for BFS Group LLC. And Caitlin is going to present for staff.
Cindy, good evening, everyone. Alright, um, can we switch? Perfect, alright, so yes. Uh, tonight I am presenting a conditional use permit for BFS Group LLC. Uh, the owner is Builders First Source Inc. and the applicant is their subsidiary, BFS Group LLC. And representing the applicant is Brandon Tis- oh gosh, I'm gonna mess it up again.
That's fine, Brandon works.
Brandon works. And he'll be here to answer any questions you have. Um, alright, so the subject site is at two forty South Adams Avenue, uh, which is shown here in this orangish color. It's in the C-one zone district and in the Gateway Design District. And it's a little over five and a half acres in size. Uh, to the north of the site is the Blue River and a vacant site with parking on it. Uh, to the east is a C dot facility. To the south is the old rodeo grounds and a vacant open space site. Uh, and then over here is also the, uh, the storage mart. Uh, and then to the west is a vacant site that is owned also by BFS Group. Uh, and then we have I seventy and, uh, beyond that is Buffalo Mountain Metro District. Alright, so existing on site, there is a primary building. Um, you can see the, uh, northeast or no northwest corner here, uh, as well as the, uh, front parking lot. Uh, the southwest corner or southeast corner is shown here in the bottom right. Um, in addition, there's also two, uh, storage sheds on site, one of which is shown in this bottom image. Uh, and then there's some, uh, rack systems for screening and storage. And that's also shown in this upper right corner. Um, the storage shed and the racks are all within the lumberyard that's on site. Uh, there are dumpsters that are not in an enclosure, that is how it was approved by town council in twenty twenty. And then there's, uh, lighting and landscaping throughout the site as well. Alright, so the proposed use, which is the same as the existing use, is a lumberyard. This falls within the contractor trades and wholesale use category, uh, which is a conditional use in the C-one zone district. Uh, the previous CUP for Alpine lumber is non-transferable. And so the, uh, new owner has come in for, uh, their own applicant or their own CUP. Uh, these are the review criteria for a CUP. We have compliance with Town Code Chapter four, compliance with the comprehensive plan, uh, compatibility with the adjacent uses, uh, the suitability of the location for the use, uh, the applicant's history of compliance, uh, the applicant's ability to meet the CUP conditions, and any other factors that might be relevant. First, we'll go over compliance with Town Code. Uh, the site is required to have fifty-three parking spaces and three ADA spaces. And the existing parking is sixty-seven standard spaces with three ADA spaces, so they're meeting their parking requirements. Uh, there is a, uh, customer-facing parking area in front of the building here. And then within the lumberyard area, uh, there's, um, another parking area. Uh, this, the configuration of this area has changed, uh, since town council approval. Uh, instead of two drive aisles and a lot of parallel parking, it's mostly ninety-degree parking and one drive aisle. So it looks, it's really hard to see on this, but, um, looks a little different. Um, and then there are three driveways that you can access the site off of Adams Avenue. For landscaping, uh, most of it is along Adams Avenue with the rest sprinkled around the perimeter of the site. Uh, the site is required to have a hundred and twenty-three trees, two hundred and forty-five shrubs, uh, over seventeen thousand square feet of living ground cover and over twelve thousand square feet of non-living ground cover. And all of those requirements are being met or mostly exceeded, actually. Uh, so the main building is this large purple box here. And then at the two storage sheds, um, there's one to the north and one to the south. Uh, the dumpsters are located just north of the main building in this kind of orange square. Um, and they are screened by the building. Um, there's a, a concrete wall right here, and then they're screened by this eight-foot cedar fence that's, um, completely surrounds the lumberyard area. And then snow storage is at the north end of the site. Uh, next, we'll look at compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the comp plan highlights fostering a diversity of jobs, promoting compatibility of land uses, enhancing the image of Silverthorn's front door and the gateway, uh, the dedication of privately-owned river property, and minimizing impacts of noise and lighting. Uh, and the proposed use has existed for over three years and is compatible with the current adjacent uses, which are more light industrial. Uh, it promotes job opportunities in the building trade sector. Uh, the building itself features gable roofs, stone siding, and wood trim, which help enhance the front door of Silverthorn. Um, during the twenty twenty final site plan approval, uh, the river tract was dedicated to the town. Um, and the, the proposed use is not changing from the previous use. So, uh, the impacts of the business are not anticipated to change either. So next, we'll look at location and adjacent uses. As I mentioned, this use has proven to be compatible over the last three years. Uh, the adjacent properties feature similar light industrial uses and similar architecture. Uh, we've received no complaints related to the business operations or impacts. Um, all of the outdoor storage is screened. And this use is a vehicle-oriented retail use, which generally fits well within the C-two zone district and the Gateway Design District. History of compliance, uh, the town, like I said, has received no complaints or code violations related to operations of either Alpine lumber or Builders First Source. Uh, Alpine lumber has been responsive in addressing, uh, noxious weeds on their property in the past. And, uh, BFS Group and Builders First Source have not previously owned or leased property within Silverthorn. Uh, next is the criteria six, which is the ability to meet conditions. Um, the existing conditions have not been problematic. Uh, staff is recommending one new condition to clarify the term. And staff finds that the applicant will be able to meet these recommended conditions. Uh, other considerations include, um, the fact that the general use will not change. Uh, public noticing was published and mailed for both this meeting and, uh, the town council hearing. Uh, and staff is recommending that the term be indefinite, although the Town Code provisions related to CUP expiration will still apply. So next, we'll look at the recommended conditions. Uh, number one, the CUP is personal to the applicant, BFS Group LLC, and is non-transferable. Number two, all material in lumber storage must be screened at all times. Number three, the operation of heavy equipment is limited to the operating hours of the business. And number four, the gates shall be closed and secured outside of business hours. Number five, uh, lumber stacks must be kept to a maximum height of fourteen feet. And number six, the CUP shall be indefinite. Uh, with this, these conditions, staff finds that the application complies with the criteria for conditional use permits and recommends approval. And with that, we've provided a suggested motion to recommend approval. Are there any questions?
What?
Quick one, um, because this corporation has bought a bunch of these, um, Alpine lumber places. Is this cup going to the holding company or just to an operational company for Silverthorn?
So, right now, it's written so that it's for BFS Group LLC.
So that would be the holding company?
That would probably be a better question for Brandon. And my understanding is that BFS Group LLC is a subsidiary of Builders First Source. Um, as for how many locations BFS Group owns, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, it only concerns the transferability of stuff. If one LLC under the whole group takes it over, they're still a transfer then if they didn't get it at the highest level.
That is true, yes.
Why was the buyer permit not transferable?
That's how it was written, so that it was personal to the applicant, that's our, our standard.
And what is the thinking behind that? Cause I looked at the, um, code and it doesn't seem to be an requirement in the code. So why is that?
Yeah.
A recommendation, cause it seems like in this situation, if it were to arise again, it's almost perfunctory. Like, I mean, can we even deny this?
The intent is to make sure that the new owner is able to come before you and town council and, uh, commit to following the same conditions and to, um, yeah. Make sure that they're, that they're on board with it all.
But there is a, I mean, the provision about transfer of ownership, which is four-four-one-nine-B-four, says that they have to put the town on notice, that there's been a change, and it created to follow the conditions. Isn't that sufficient?
Right, another, in addition to what Caitlin's saying, um, we also wanna make sure that if it's being transferred, we're reviewing, we're taking a chance to review, um, how the business is being operated. Are they gonna change hours, are they changing operations completely? And will it impact how the site is being used? Um, making sure that, you know, storage of materials is not out of compliance or any other compliance issues don't pop up with different, a different type of operations. So it has been standard practice, the code does say that. So if we didn't apply that, um, condition, then it would be transferable and the new owner would have to, uh, let us know that they're taking on the new CUP. Um, but with that condition in place, it does require them to come back and get a new approved conditional use permit and go through that process of just reevaluating, does this still make sense in this particular location in town? Since it's a conditional use, it's not a use by right, it's a case-by-case basis review. So it just allows for that reevaluation. Sometimes these conditional uses go on and on and on for years and years. And the surrounding area changes over time. And then, at that point, it may or may not make sense to continue the use.
Could you, at, twenty years from now, you've had a lumberyard being operated for those two decades? Can you all of a sudden pull the rug out underneath that, that use just because there was a change in ownership?
Um, the zoning does allow, at that point, when they're applying for renewal, to make that decision. Now, would Silverthorn Town Council make that decision? That's a whole other question of, you know, it's probably more likely to occur at redevelopment.
Yeah, I get, I mean, obviously, that, you'd imagine the applicant doesn't have a problem with these conditions. It just, you know, cause I think this has happened before where it's almost seems perfunctory that we have these transfers in ownership and then they come in for a new conditional use permit. You have to have a public hearing, you have to get everyone here. I imagine there's a fee that they have to pay. Um, see, there doesn't seem, like, there's a lot of discretion to deny it. So why?
Oh.
Put them through?
You, yeah, there's absolutely discretion to deny it.
Brandon might be a little nervous now. Yeah, those questions were more informational for me, I was just curious, like, what the process.
I mean, we did it to a car dealership.
We did, yeah.
So, it can be, it can happen.
Are you saying that you would rather this be a staff-level review or?
I mean, it seems like that would make sense for this type of review, cause doesn't this now go to the council too?
Yes.
Yeah, it seems like it could be more streamlined.
Sure.
That's my opinion, though.
I couldn't tell, maybe I just couldn't be patient and read enough. But, um, the condition that was added, what was it?
Oh, the condition that was added was the last one here, uh, clarifying that the CUP shall be indefinite.
And it says something about, something else I read, said something about something and then the one dated four-four nineteen. Is there some, is there an expiration date in the other one?
No, so the, the previous one didn't clarify what the term was at all. So by default, it was indefinite. And we're not changing the term with this condition, we're just clarifying that, like, the Town Code Section four-four nineteen still applies.
And when you say the operation of heavy equipment, does this include, like, loaders that are clearing snow? Or delivery trucks that might come early and somewhat outside of business hours? And without necessarily someone being able to control that?
That's a good question. Um, I mean, I think with delivery, with deliveries, that would be within operating hours, like, by default. It, sure, maybe the stores you open, but the business is, is operating.
There might be a snowstorm and they might have to come in early. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that could happen that could impact that. I guess I can ask Brandon if that is something they run into, I was just curious. And if it's loaders and equipment, I mean, that specific part of town, none of the neighbors that are in that area would be sensitive to that issue because they're literally running snow plows around all hours of the night. So I don't think that that is something that really matters in that specific area.
And to add to that, the stance that we always take in those variables is we always communicate to all of our vendors, hey, if something happens and you need to be here before or after hours, um, please understand that it's, although in, call it industrial neighborhood, um, we ask you to minimize any activity that you do. So, some of the vendors we deal with may be coming from, you know, long miles away. And they might have a, call it sleeper in their truck where they can sleep. And so we just ask that they don't, they're not out doing anything that would be a cause for concern as far as leaving their truck running or washing their truck or doing anything weird like that. It's, hey, please be mindful of your neighbors and all type of stuff, is what we typically communicate. Cause we all know, you know, we can post these hours, but because of the conditions of where we live, you know, sometimes someone might come in twenty minutes late or they might show up thirty minutes early cause they wanna get a jumpstart on the day. And we always communicate to people, our vendors, that is totally okay, but please understand we're not open for business yet. So please be as cautious as possible.
And do you ever have to take deliveries outside of operating hours?
Well, let's, hold on a second, let's just do, yeah.
Right, sorry, it's commissioners' questions of Caitlin, they'll get to you next, yeah.
And then we'll, and then, yeah, so anybody help, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I don't have one. And I think what you mentioned, Val, didn't the town recommend a fifteen-year term? And we were pushing back, saying, why limit someone's business?
Is this a question for Caitlin?
To fifteen years.
It was. Wait, we're kinda going out of.
I'm just clarifying why this term is recommended as indefinite. Yet with a previous CUP, it was recommended fifteen years alive.
I believe you're talking about, about plumbing, is that right?
Probably was.
I think it's a different case. The snow sports.
Or in the snow sports.
There's been a few, of course, but I just feel like there's not really consistency in the term.
So those CUPs were located more centrally within town where the use over time might not continue to make sense as the town corp builds up. Whereas this part of town, this part of the gateway, is pretty solidly light industrial. And so, um, there isn't much of a push to change that, as far as I'm aware. So.
Um, also, we, we had this exact discussion, Caitlin and I did, because we remembered the Planning Commission's feedback about why are you suggesting this term? And there was quite a bit of discussion around what, what is the purpose of having the term? And then the term was, um, increased for that particular application. And so we, we reviewed the conditional use, uh, permit code to think about when would the town need that opportunity to reevaluate the CUP use in that location? And a lot of it is covered in the code, as long as it's not transferable. Um, the code also, it covers redevelopment. So if they were to transfer ownership or redevelop, they have to come back to us and apply for a new CUP. And so we felt like that was covering all of what we were trying to anticipate the need to reevaluate the use for. Um, but we definitely had that conversation in mind of why are you recommending this term? So that's why it's inconsistent with the recent CUP applications that you've seen. And also the previous CUP that was approved did not have a term, so we're trying to be consistent with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Um, this might be kinda off the wall, but has any consideration been given to, uh, trucks using the, uh, parking area at the sire trailhead for staging and whatnot? Um, and, and basically blocking access to the trailhead parking?
I have not heard of any complaints related to that. Um, it is not a, a condition that said parking in right-of-way. Yeah, Adams Avenue is a, a right-of-way, it's a town-owned right-of-way. And parking in town-owned right-of-ways is not allowed.
Right.
So that, that code provision covers that.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm not saying they're all Alpine trucks, but trucks do use that area for staging or...
Okay.
And sometimes block access to the trailhead parking.
Okay.
Interesting, yeah, and it's actually not, um, any formalized trailhead or parking. That trail goes through the Silverthorn Storage Site. Um, and we, um, are in the process of working with the Forest Service to reroute it. Cause you know the social trail that you're talking about, where there is the ability to park, you're actually parking in the right-of-way and it's not, um, formalized parking. They're allowing it to happen, nobody's, the police department is not ticketing people for parking there to access the trail. Um, they could ticket people to park there. And they could also ticket trucks if it became an issue for loading. Um, we could also address it as a condition if you're proposing to add a condition that they're not allowed to park, um, in that area, we could add it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Caitlin, thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
Sure.
And just state your name and the address for the record.
Yeah, uh, my name is Brandon Tiscadenio. Uh, I work at two forty South Adams Avenue and I'm the locations general manager.
Do you wanna say anything about, should we just fire away questions at you if we have?
Fire away, I can start off by saying Caitlin did a wonderful job. Um, I mean, I, I think the easy thing to point out is nothing is going to change. Um, and when I say nothing, I mean literally nothing. Um, so, we've been compliant and done everything we've ever been asked to do. Um, no complaints to my knowledge, and I think Caitlin referenced that. So I don't anticipate that changing in any way. Um, but by all means, if anyone has questions, we're happy to answer them.
Mike, your question about the, who holds the?
Well, basically, it was a question of the conditional use goes to what entity, since there's these holding entities involved. So, but it sounds like it's the overarching entity that's getting the cup.
Correct, that, that would be my understanding as well.
That'd be good, because if you, if they decide to reorganize and pull another entity in, they wouldn't need a new one, so.
Correct, yes, yeah, that, that would be my understanding, yes.
One additional, not question, but point, is that you actually own two lots there and you're only talking about the cup on the lot that currently holds the, uh, old Alpine lumber facility.
Correct, yes, and, and as of right now, if it's relevant, you don't have any immediate plans to, again, redevelop that vacant lot or anything like that. And no, nothing in that footprint will change.
What are your hours of operation?
Uh, seven to five, Monday through Friday. Um, in the past, we had been open on Saturdays. This year was our first year since we've been open that we were not. Business didn't make sense to be open on Saturdays, and we were only open eight to noon anyway. So, Monday through Friday, seven to five.
Is there anything in the current proposed conditions that hamper every day business?
It's a good question, I, I, I did look at that. Um, and I think the short answer is no. It, it's very easy for us to operate and do what we do based off of the current conditions. We have a big enough footprint, we're fortunate at that, so that we don't have to, um, screen in the dumpsters. Like, I think that's normally a, a, a potential cause for concern, or the height stacking of lumber or anything of that nature. So, as of right now, it's pretty easy for us to abide by all conditions. The one thing I think, and she had mentioned that it changed, is we reconfigured our employee parking in the back a little bit. Um, and that was just more of safety reasons, um, making sure that it's a little bit easier and more visible to where people were parking and kind of designated spots and that type of thing. Um, but no, as of right now, we don't have any issues, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Alright, now we will open it up to, to public comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, please come up to the podium. Or, okay, now we'll shut down public comments. And move right to, um, a motion. Can we, can Caitlin, can you put the motion back up on the thing? If we can get a motion, um, from someone, whoever might want to.
Uh, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for BFS Group LLC to allow a contractor trails, trades slash wholesale use in the C-one zone district based on the staff recommended findings and conditions.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and now we'll open it up to commissioners' comments before we take the roll call for the vote. Um, anyone would like to, anybody that would like to say something, go ahead.
Well, I'm pleased that we're going through this process just because we wanna make sure that you have what you need to, um, legally operate correctly, so, um, the fact that there's nothing really changing makes this pretty perfunctory. But, um, it is part of how the process works, so we're here to help, so.
No, I, I understand and I appreciate it and more than happy to open my doors up to anybody whenever they would like to stop by and make sure we're complying and we're adding to town value.
I certainly see no issues and I speak in favor of the motion.
Okay, who else, anybody? Or should we just take a vote?
Sure, sounds like.
Like, we should just move right to, right to a roll call vote. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, Leanne Shaw?
Yes.
Brian Baranbach?
Yes.
Tom Erickson?
I think we're all here and I'm the alternate.
Oh, oh, true, thank you.
Good point.
Um, Michael Malloy?
Yes.
Valerie Connolly?
Valerie Connelly?
Yes.
Craig Phillips?
Yes.
Suzie Bauer?
Yes.
Jenny Bloudemans?
Yes. All right, so approved. It will go to Town Council on Wednesday, next Wednesday. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, we'll see you next week.
Sound good. Thank you all. You as well.
All right, now informational items.
Um, yeah, I got a couple of things for you. Um, first, you notice that the, um, formatting of the staff report is very different. Um, that was for digital accessibility purposes. Um, state law requires that anything posted digitally has to be made digitally accessible and then we have to have our own town policy that says what that means. And so we adopted a policy and we're, um, following it now. And Caitlin reformatted the whole staff report to meet that. And so, um, I hope you didn't have too much trouble with it. Does anybody have any feedback about it?
Um, I think it's, I think it's really good that you have those links on there because I can't, I can't remember, um, I mean, there's so many times that I've tried to, I've looked at something and thought, well, when was that and what did we say? And now to be able to just click it instead of having to go back through and think about it, that's, that's an A-plus move.
That was Craig's suggestion. Thank you very much. Was that what you envisioned for the links? It was, okay, great. And did the links work for everybody hopefully?
Yes.
Wonderful, awesome. Um, so yeah, if you ever have any feedback about the staff reports, formatting, content, anything, please feel free to reach out, but just wanted to let you know that that's why it changed. Um, Town Manager recruitment process, the Town Council will be interviewing their finalists the first week of January. Um, there will also be, it's a two-day event for them, so there will be a town tour for the finalists. And then there's going to be a public open house for people to come meet the finalists. And then they will do the, the interviews the following day. So that's happening, um, January sixth and seventh. And there will be more information to come once we have the details of exact timings of specifically the open house if you're interested to come meet the finalists.
How many finalists are there?
Um, four.
Are they all outside of?
Right now, it's still confidential.
Oh, okay.
I have no idea who they are, um, and that will be announced, um, by the end of this month, so, yeah.
Wow, I didn't realize Ryan was stepping down.
Um, Ryan resigned in April.
Really?
Yeah. I know, we haven't had that many meetings.
Yeah, we met at Tambo before that. I'm not sure. Maybe I missed that.
Yeah, sorry, um, there might have been a meeting that you missed where we talked about it, but yeah, sorry if I didn't think to follow up.
I guess he hasn't, yeah, now that I think about it, those emails for the town at Silverthorne have not included a...
Oh.
Little memo from him, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, that's, that's coming up. Um, Matt Latherback, who is the community and business liaison in our department in the community development, resigned and his last day was Friday, so we're super sad to, to see him go. He's moving to the Front Range in Fort Collins. Um, and so we will have an open, another open position in our department. The Rec Center has a full day closure planned on December sixteenth. It's so that they can switch over to their new transformer with the expansion happening. Um, they are also going to be abandoning the old switchgear within the building and going over to the new switchgear. So that's planned for December sixteenth. There was, um, some public messaging sent out today to let all Rec Center users know. And, um, side note, heads up, I just had a meeting with Excel today where they said if it's super cold, if it's below freezing, they can't do it. And so it would be delayed to another day. So there's a chance that it would be rescheduled, but, um, the town will do their best with the public messaging to keep everybody apprised of the situation right now. It's planned for December sixteenth and we're hoping for warm weather that day. Um, also, the first Friday tree lighting is happening this week, um, four thirty to eight thirty P M. And at the pavilion, Santa's coming and there's going to be a holiday market. Um, the holiday market will continue into Saturday, so if you'd rather come, if you'd rather avoid the Santa crowds and still shop at the market, you can come on Saturday. Um, those are the updates I had for you, but always happy to answer any questions if anybody wants any other updates.
How's the Rec Center coming?
It's coming along.
Staying on track?
Um, they're, they're a little bit behind schedule. Um, they're optimistic about being able to catch up and they're still tracking, um, completion. They're targeting fall of next year. Um, but yeah, they've got some making up to do for sure.
Big project.
What's Fourth Street North, how's that?
Fourth Street North, we have, um, they're scheduled to issue the building permits on Thursday for the four mixed-use buildings and the, um, one small plaza restaurant building. Those are the, all of the remaining permits in that development. Um, we've currently got the parking garage, which is just about ready to get a C O. Um, they're just waiting for a sign-off on the elevator. The Fourth North Workforce Housing is completely underway. You see a crane there as well as, um, the Holiday Inn Express. That's the other crane in, in the Fourth North area. And so those two are completely underway. I wouldn't expect them to C O until maybe, um, end of next year. Yeah, so that's all of the buildings in that development. Any other curiosities, questions, updates?
How's the Ice Castles coming along?
I know, gosh, they had some really warm weather.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did.
I'm sure. They're getting after it now with these cold temps. But, um, I don't know an opening date for that yet. Um, I don't have any info on that. That's what you're asking. But, but it's coming along. If you've driven past it, you can see they're, they're working hard to make those castles, so.
Yeah, when it turned cold, they, they were just, yeah.
Yeah.
It was like nothing to something.
Yeah.
Yep, it's going to get a lot of action. Like, I think it's a great place for it. I think it's a great, even the parking, there's lots of parking in the stores. They have, I, do they still have a shuttle?
I don't think so.
Shuttle around lately.
I don't think so.
They are, they were talking about it.
They might need one. Yeah, um, I think, like, all that's good. I just wonder if the mag chloride's going to melt the north side of the... So if they're wondering why they keep losing their eyes on the north side and why it's black, let them know what's going on. Um, otherwise, I mean, when it's all glowing and everything, people are going to go crazy. People that had no intention of stopping here are going to be stopping here, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's cool. It'll be very visible, yeah. Yeah.
I got a question about, is, um, Stevens Way project going to happen next summer, do you think?
No, that is a long-term project. So, um, that is going to be about a twenty million dollar project, which we don't have budgeted. Um, we're going to be applying for federal grants for that. Um, but we're seeing that, you know, probably within ten years would be nice. It's not a near-term project. It's going to take a lot of different, it'll take, you know, a couple of years to fully design it and then, then we have to go for the grants and then it's, it's going to be longer range than we originally anticipated. A lot of that has to do with, um, the way the grant money has been going lately.
Because the town owns that parcel where the Burger King used to be?
Yep, and the Pizza Hut.
Are they going to plan on upkeeping that or am I...
Yeah, well, the plan right now is to, to keep those parcels, um, with that long-range vision in mind. Um, we're currently renting out the Pizza Hut, the Cafe Food Rescue to utilize that building in the meantime. Um, and then when the opportunity comes available for us to realign and widen Stevens Way, uh, we'll go ahead and use those parcels to do it and then we can salvage what's left and sell it and hopefully, you know, have some new businesses come in there.
I mean, the Burger King is unsightly, though, I think is sort of the sentiment. And, um, that whole place could probably do better as a parking lot where people could sit while the interstate's packed up. So I mean, consideration to at least remediate the property, to get rid of it would be an idea. It has to happen anyway. Yes. Put that in the meeting minutes.
Did you talk loud enough for it to...
I don't know, I'm scared. We also watched Sports Birthday.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's disappointing, for sure. All right, well, that's all I have for you. Have a wonderful evening. Happy holidays to everybody.
All the favor.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Do you use the meeting minutes? Or was it just the roof?
This is an app that is just downloaded without...